Now therefore be resolved by the Manchester Township Board of Education as follows. The public shall be excluded from discussion of here and after specified subject matters. The general nature of the subject matters to be discussed is legal personnel and negotiations. It's anticipated these matters will be made public within sixty days. This resolution shall become effective immediately. May I have a motion please?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we hopefully backed around that past hour forty-five minutes or so. Okay.
Hi Glenn, you decided to bring Charlie?
I really didn't feel good. I'm like a little old woman, which... I don't know, two weeks. That's alright, I'll wait.
Whatever district my Mr. Drive is born in, I can't remember.
Thank you.
So, you spent the wedding dinner?
A hundred seventy bucks. Oh, Thanksgiving. Yeah, of course, I do, because my sister's not moving, so I had her buy it at the wedding. So, he just ordered a cake. But yeah, it's not the Indian, it's the Indian Christmas turkey.
What?
Yeah.
And if you know what they, or things that they don't, or their box, they do that.
Sounds delicious though. I actually, I'm gonna have to cook some stuff this year because it's a happy, because normally I have like twenty-five people, my whole family, and everybody brings something, and the only thing I ever cook is turkey.
Yeah, so that's...
I like making the turkey, it's pretty easy, like I put it in the bag, I know, because it's been five years since I made it, and then it's like, sometimes it'll go out, and then it's like, when you get it out, and it's like, and you come back. I would love that, it'd probably be delicious. You know what I like to see with that, is the pie? Pie, probably, I'm not really that big with that, but I get it from the pudding.
Yeah, it's a wood pie.
That's good.
I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the Manchester Township Board of Education for November 2020. May I have a real call please?
Mr. Jenner, here. Mr. Scarry.
Here.
Mr. Gulch. Mr. Staples. Miss Mount.
Here.
Miss Pease.
Here.
And Sweetak.
Here.
And Mr. Page.
Here. Okay, well, thank you all for coming out tonight. Bigger number than we've had recently, and that's good to see. People are coming out a little bit more. We're still going through a tumultuous time, everybody knows that, of course. I just heard it described yesterday as education in New Jersey right now is just like trying to change a flat tire on a moving car. You know, you just can't keep up and do what you need to do because everything is moving from one place to the other before you get a chance to get one last night off. They've already changed locations on you. So it's been very difficult to keep up with all that. Uh, we do thank you for coming though, and we hope to get into the agenda here quite soon. My presentation is very, very short as usual. This is my bag. Oh, what? Gosh, Steve. Did not just move to where is it? If I was over there. Please join me in a flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My report for this month is I was able to attend two meetings of the CUSAC on the governance portion of it. I believe we kept that wrapped up pretty well, and you'll be hearing more about that during our meeting tonight. And I was also able to attend a training for Governance 4 to satisfy the training requirement that I have for being elected for another three-year term. All right.
Okay. We have the opportunity to recognize two of our Teachers of the Year and the support or educational support staff. We did have a little mistake in the budget in the agenda. It should say it's a middle school and regional day, not which way it's in regional day. Uh, but I'm going to start off with Mr. Nindavaji to come up and recognize our Teacher of the Year.
Steve, just give me one second. So I just want to make the announcement about the, uh...
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry. For those of you that are watching this meeting virtually on our live, on our livestream, you will be able to go onto the district website on our main page, and if you click on the board meeting link at the bottom and upcoming events, a screen... A screen, there we go. A screen will pop up, and it will give you a link to the agenda, a link to the YouTube livestream. And you will also see an email address there. If you are, if you are home watching this virtually and you have any questions for the board, there are two, there are two times for public comment, public comment on agenda items and public comment on any items. Click that link. It will give you instructions on what you need to include. In the subject line, please include whether your question is related to the agenda or whether it's not. When we get to those sections of the board meeting, we will read your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lorenz. Nicely done. Okay, Mr. Nindavaji. Now, normally our Teachers of the Year are recognized back in May, but because of all the things that we've been going through, we missed those times, but we're so, we're so happy to be able to recognize them now. So let's start with, you're gonna start with the teacher, Mrs. Baumgartner. Saw a lot of flowers back there, so that looks good.
It's a great pleasure that I introduce Megan Baumgartner as the Middle School Teacher of the Year. Mrs. Baumgartner is supported by her husband, Rob, and her son Casey and daughter Sammy, they're all here tonight. She has taught special education language arts at the middle school for 17 years. She earned a Bachelor of Science in Special Education at Westchester University and a Master's Degree in Education and Administration from Grand Canyon University. Mrs. Baumgartner has built a career around helping students and being a leader amongst her colleagues. She established herself as an accomplished teacher who has earned the respect of parents and colleagues. She sets high expectations for her students while promoting a caring environment where all students thrive. Mrs. Baumgartner has established herself as an outstanding special education teacher who has had extensive training in the Wilson Reading Program and has established a successful program at the middle school. She has approached this role the way she has always approached every aspect of her life with an exemplary, exemplary work ethic, positive attitude, and the energy often seen from a brand-new teacher. It is not surprising then that Mrs. Baumgartner has found success teaching special education. She is not only, she only brings a demand for a high level of performance from her students, but she has expanded her experiences in preparing them for the rigors of high school. In addition to her commitment for, to her students, Mrs. Baumgartner serves as assistant to the principal and is an active participant in the skip committee. Each of these roles exemplifies the leadership role she maintains in the middle school. As a member of the skip committee, Mrs. Baumgartner assists in developing, planning, and presenting professional development to the staff. Her expertise and literacy makes her truly an asset to the middle school. In addition to her commitment to the middle school, Mrs. Baumgartner gives back to the community by participating in a variety of fundraisers that assist middle school students and their parents. I would like to congratulate Megan on her accomplishments and wish her the best of luck as our Teacher of the Year.
That will be very brief. Um, thank you. I am honored to have been chosen as the Middle School Teacher of the Year. It has certainly been a very different year and sometimes difficult. Nonetheless, I am privileged to work under a very supportive administration and with an outstanding group of colleagues. I look forward to when we can all be back in school together again. A special thank you to my family for their love and support.
You two had already picked it up. That's great. The family's here? Yeah, have a family, especially the Yankee guy. I want to bring the Yankee guy. Here we go. Your hawk film, by the way. I would ask Megan what she does in her spare time, but it doesn't sound like you have any spare time. You're very active, so thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you.
Next.
Uh, now, it's with great pleasure and pride that I introduce to the Manchester Township Middle Schools 2019-2020 Educational Services Professional of the Year, Mrs. Charlene O'Hara. It is well deserved. For 25 years, she has demonstrated leadership both as a member of our staff and as a member of the Manchester community. I am sure her husband Glenn is here tonight, and her sons Kevin and Tim, both Manchester graduates, and her six grandchildren are all very proud of her. If anyone wants to understand the positive impact a paraprofessional can have on a child's education, then just observe Charlene at work. In the classroom, she is an effective member of the instructional team who collaborates with teachers and colleagues in maintaining a supportive learning environment. Charlene engages the whole child and understands that learning can often mean meeting a child's academic and social, emotional needs. What really makes Charlene stand out is how she builds positive, productive relationships she builds with her, with her colleagues. Teachers often request for her to be in their classroom because of how extremely knowledgeable she is about teaching and students, and she often provides them with thoughtful suggestions that will benefit struggling students. Charlene has worked with every type of student over the years at every level in our building, and one thing is consistent. Her caring attitude and her ability to really listen to children and make them feel heard. As a result, she is often able to reach the most challenging students and understand them, and her input is invaluable to teachers, counselors, and administrators who are trying to find ways to support those children so they can succeed. On behalf of her Manchester middle school family, I want to thank her for her positivity, dedication, and professionalism. Congratulations, Charlene.
I'd just like to thank Anne L. uh... Anne L. Dean for the nomination and Nancy and Steve for choosing me for this award. It's a privilege to be recognized. On a day-to-day basis, I think paraprofessionals are sometimes overlooked for the positive impacts we have on our students and the contribution we make in our classrooms. We come with different strengths. Some are more academic, others are more nurturing, and some are a combination of the two. But we're all important in our different roles, and ceremonies such as this being appreciated means so much. Thank you.
Picture, picture. Family coming up? Come on, family. There they come. Congratulations, Charlene.
It's unusual for me to say anything to these things. I have to say something back later, Charlene. And Tim, and Kevin. Kevin's, he's ten, he's in Germany. I'm not sure where he's stationed now. Uh, I had the pleasure of working alongside Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts of the United States for about 10 years or so. It was, uh, a lot, a lot, a lot of work goes into this, and Charlene and Glenn both extremely supportive of the community as well. And I want to applaud them for their two sons as well. Kevin graduated my daughter, and Tim graduated my son, so we had, our kids are exactly the same age. Tim, you're State Patrolman now, right? And Kevin is Colonel. Yeah? Major? Major? Major in the United States Army, so they're all giving their community stuff.
Thank you, Charlene. And, you know, Charlene made a great point where she said the paraprofessionals are overlooked. And it just reminds me when I played sports, they would say a good official is someone that you don't even know is there. And they're the best. And that would be you, because you're, when you're in a classroom, it's seamless, it's a transition, and you're just always there for your kids. And, uh, I want to thank you for all the, thank you. Uh, okay, we look like Regional Day. Mrs. McCallum, come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Trathaway. Board of Education members, colleagues, and guests. It is my honor to introduce the Regional Day Schools Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Anna Yuduszkowska. This evening, her husband Arthur, daughters Amelia and Paulina, and her three grandsons, Henry, Julian, and Joseph, have joined her this evening as we honor her accomplishment. Anna graduated from the University of Warsaw, Poland with a Bachelor and Master's of Arts degrees in elementary education. She furthered her studies at Ocean County College, New Jersey City University, and Georgian Court College, where she completed her coursework for Teacher of the Handicapped. For the past 20 years, the Regional Day School has been her home. Anna began her career as a paraprofessional, and she's been a classroom teacher for the past four years. During her tenure, she has been educating students with the most diverse and significant disabilities. Anna is the epitome of grace, compassion, and creativity. She may have a quiet voice, but her heart speaks volumes. You might remember the one opening day she grabbed your mic from you?
I can remember that, yes.
Each child, each child is treated as if they were her own. Her lessons and activities incorporate academics, communication, self-help, and valuable life skills. Most importantly, the classroom environment she fosters is one of respect, gratitude, mindfulness, and genuine care for each weather, each other, as well as the world around them. Anna has great pride for her family, our school, and community. She has built a century garden at our school. She is involved in the Manchester community as a teacher at the Polish Language Academy. She volunteers her time as a eucharistic minister at St. Luke's, and prior to COVID, she was visiting residents at a local nursing home. Anna, you have made a positive difference in the lives of so many children and continue to contribute to the success of our students and school. Thank you for all you do to support the Regional Day School family. Congratulations as our Teacher of the Year, and enjoy your newly coveted parking spot.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for such nice, kind words. I promised myself I won't crack, so I'll try to keep my promise. First of all, I wanted to tell you that, um, my biggest wish is to share this incredible, amazing award with each of you because thanks to you, thanks to your help, support, believing in me, uh, thanks to your guidance, suggestions, I'm here today. So this award belongs to all of us. I always believe in teamwork, and by team, I mean, I mean incredible, wonderful colleagues and everybody who works in Manchester District because, um, over the years, I was able to meet the best staff ever. I've been learning for all those years a lot, and, um, thanks to you, I can share my skills with my wonderful... with my wonderful students, who inspire me every day, who motivate me every day, who teach me every day. So, thank you, my colleagues, my friends, my amazing paraprofessionals. I wouldn't survive one day without you. Thank you so much. And I believe that some of you, and I mean whole crew in Regional Day School and Manchester District, including bus drivers, custodians, you might not even realize how you impacted my life when I came from Poland. I'm not sure if everybody could understand me. I'm not sure if even right now people can understand me sometimes. I still speak with Polish accent. It will stay with me forever. But I, but I really so appreciate of your help and try. So, in my heart, I treasure two countries I love. Poland, the country I was born in, and America, which I love and live now. I speak two languages. I have two families, my family and group of friends in Poland, my family and friends in America. And that's the biggest blessing in my life. So, I try to put together tradition of Poland and tradition of America, and that gives me the wonderful opportunity to learn and live even fullest, more beautiful life. So, I would like to end my speech again thanking everybody, uh, in English, of course, and then to honor you, my American English-speaking family. Let me say from the bottom of my heart, thank you in my first language. So, dziękuję wam z całego serca za wszystko. Jestem tak szczęśliwa. I am so happy today. And many of God's blessings to each of you. Niech Pan Bóg wam zawsze błogosławi. Thank you so much. I wish you health, safe, and happiness. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations to Anna. Congratulations. Uh, and I just, I do have to tell the story, Anna. I'm sorry, but I have to tell the story. When I, we had a first day when, when things were obviously a lot better, uh, we had this whole auditorium packed. It was, uh, people for this opening day of school. And Mrs. McCallis said, "We have a new teacher, uh, Anna," and I couldn't even begin to say her last name. So I thought, oh, okay, I'll put her on the spot. She's very quiet. So I, I came over and said, "Anna, can you just tell everybody here," there are probably 700 people in this auditorium, "can you, uh, just tell me your last name?" She basically took the microphone, told me about her experiences over in Poland, and, uh, her husband, her family, and everything that she'd been doing. And for 700 people, they sat there and listened to her for the first 15 minutes. But what a great, what a great personality, what a great job. And, and I see when I go to Regional Day, how, how she lights up and the kids light up. It's a very special place, Regional Day, and, and people like you, Anna, make it very special. Uh, so thank you for all you do. Thank you.
It is my honor to now introduce Ms. Carrie Walsh, the Regional Day Schools Educational Service Professional of the Year. Carrie graduated from Springfield College in Massachusetts with a master's of science degree in physical therapy. Prior to joining the Regional Day School family and our PT department in 2016, Carrie worked in the private sector at sites including Jersey Shore Medical Center, Children's Specialized Hospital, and Early Intervention. Carrie is a published author and is presented at conferences across the tri-state area on an array of topics, from gross motor development to the evaluation and treatment of children with autism. Carrie keeps abreast of research and trends in the field of physical therapy through her membership in both the New Jersey and American Physical Therapy Associations. As the co-facilitator of a parent support group for family members of children newly diagnosed with autism, she shares both her professional knowledge and expertise as a parent. Pediatrics is her passion and area of specialty. In 2011, Carrie founded an outpatient pediatric therapy center, which has grown into a comprehensive program providing therapeutic services to improve the lives of children with special needs. Carrie was an instrumental member of a team that planned and designed our highly successful academic and therapeutic-rich preschool disabled program for children ages three through five. She also assisted in the design of our playground equipment to meet the needs of our student population. After school hours, Carrie can be found at the high school stadium supporting her daughter as she marches with the color guard or in the theater watching her sing, dance, and act. And during the winter months, she trays in her sneakers for ice skates and works with the children with special needs as the assisting coach of the Brick Stars Challenger Hockey Team. Community service is important to Carrie, and she has served as the Assistant Director of Maternal Wings, a nonprofit charity to assist impoverished expectant mothers. Carrie is an expert in the field of physical therapy and is a highly respected and valued member of our faculty. She makes child-centered decisions and is team-minded collaborator, compassionate individual, and an all-around exceptional person. Her recognition as the Regional Day Schools ESP is truly well deserved because she's an extra-special person. Congratulations.
Thank you. I will keep my remarks short. Um, I do have to say thank you to everybody who came tonight, um, from Regional Day. I've had the blessing of working in many different aspects of pediatric physical therapy, from the NICU all the way on up, long-term care, outpatient setting, and I have not yet had the opportunity to work in a school-based setting, and it was something that I was really thinking about. And I could not have landed in a better place. As Mr. Trathaway said, there's just something incredibly special about Regional Day. And Miss Anna said she wasn't going to cry. I'm going to try to. I don't usually succeed when I say that, but, um, there are truly angels that walk the halls every single day at Regional Day School. And I am honored and privileged to be able to work with each and every one of you, and so grateful for the opportunity to work with the children in the school as well. So I thank you very much for this incredible honor. Thank you.
People like Charlene and the paraprofessionals. There's so many people that make this school district very special. So I just want to take a minute and kind of recognize some of the different positions we have. Because basically, if you look at our school district, and basically, it's a small city. It has a lot of the things that a city does. It actually even has a lot more than some of the other, some differences. For example, we have transportation. I mean, I can't tell you how many more challenges that our transportation department has met due to this pandemic. Normally, they would be, their normal job is to take 3,000 students two times a day for 180 days, which is obviously tremendous enough. But this time, and people think, wow, you don't have as many students coming to school. Their job is actually more difficult. Our bus drivers make many more trips because of our five-hour schedule. They are constantly, once they're done with one round, they're going in and picking up another round. They have done a tremendous job in the transportation department, the bus drivers, the aides. I can't thank them enough for what they do each and every day, making sure that our kids are safe, but getting them back and forth. In this pandemic, they've really shown their color and really have stepped up. Our buildings and ground staff, our maintenance and custodians, again, that's a group that works hard every day. And I can't tell you, and Mr. Lorenzen will back me up on this. We have visitors who come into our schools all the time, and the first thing they remark is how clean our schools are and how well-kept they are. And some of our buildings are not the newest buildings, but they are very well-kept. They'll take what they normally do, and they'll add the pandemic where they are constantly cleaning each and every day. They're wiping things down. One of the custodians said, I just keep going around and around and just keep wiping things down and disinfecting things. They do a fantastic job, and that's one of the reasons why we've been very fortunate up to this point to not have many cases here. And again, I attribute it to the custodians, the maidens, and the buildings and ground staff. Our education association, obviously, that speaks for themselves. But teachers have a very demanding job in normal times. But putting them in the situation that we put, and our teachers and our paraprofessionals. Back in March, in one day, I remember addressing them and saying, I don't think we're going to be back to school for at least a week or two. So you might want to be prepared for that. Well, obviously, it was a lot longer than a week or two. And they had to learn new strategies, new work with the computers, the technology, working with remote students. They did a fantastic job, and I can't thank them enough for what they've done. And parents have talked to me this year and said, you know, where we are now is 180 degrees from when we left in March. And that's a tribute to the professional development that they've taken in their professionals and everything that they do. Our library service, media specialists in each building, their jobs are changing, and they are adapting to what we need them to do. Medical services, our nurses have been a tremendous resource in telling us what we need to do as a building, what we need to do as a staff to be prepared. And any situation that comes up, they have a direct line with the Ocean County Board of Health, and they have been fantastic in telling us what we need to do and some of the safety precautions we need. Counseling and support services, again, we think of the academics and how challenging it is, think how challenging it is for our students in the SEL and the counseling and the things that they, obstacles they have to face, our families have to face, whether it's a job situation, whether they're staying home, whether they're with people that they don't see, they don't have that interaction. Our counselors and our therapists and our child study team, they do a fantastic job reaching out, and we still need to do that because that's really a big demand for us. Secretaries, receptionists, so many different challenges now, working with parents, trying to fill and meet those accommodations with those people. They're our frontline, and they continue to do a great job. Our food service, even though it's an outside group, we do have some workers in there. And really, they're feeding theoretically 3,000 students a day. Everybody is eligible to have a lunch and a breakfast, and they do that. And they do things on the weekends and on Monday where we have breaks, where they've been available and families have come in who are really struggling and able to come in and get food for the week. The miscellaneous staff, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the technology staff, mainly because he's taking the video right now, so I definitely have to mention him. But basically, our year this year, we started off with a one-on-one. That means our goal was to get a device into every student's hand. And not only that, but we also gave devices to our teachers. I want to thank Mr. Lorenzen for finding the funds to do that, and that's something that we build up over the years and something that we were very well-prepared, if you could be prepared, for remote instruction. We are as prepared as we can as far as devices. And then, taking it a step further, we have families who do not have that internet service or do not have that connectivity. And Mr. Rasha and his group have been looking for hotspots and donating hotspots to those families who need that connectivity to make sure that they're still connected to the district. We also have, obviously, our safety staff, our SRO, our class three officers, public relations, Mrs. Bousitis, who's in the front row. I need to mention her so I can get good publicity out of this. And again, getting information out to the public, and it's almost like, and I cringe, I think probably Dee cringes every time I call her, I have to send this letter out, I have to send this letter out. And she's available all the time to get that out. And she does change my grammar once in a while, so I do appreciate that, being an old math teacher. And of course, it would be a long day if I did mention my central office staff because that's the people that I work with every day. The confidential secretaries, payroll account, and Mr. Lorenzen's office. Again, very different challenges where we are now, doing a lot of things remotely, things that we normally would just pick up the phone or do this. It's more challenges than we were facing all the time. And finally, my administrators, building administrators, again, when we looked at schedules and now, and I'll get to that a little later, as far as bringing more and more students back. Basically, I said, we need to get these students back, now you show me how we're willing to do that. And that's a matter of finding a way to get them back to school and keeping the spacing and keeping the health and safety and working with staff who've had a ton of accommodations. We've given our staff a ton of accommodations, but on the other end, staff is willing to work with us and say, if I can only do this, I can make sure I work with my part student. And that's really the important part. Whatever we have to do to keep our teachers connected with our students and our administrators do a great job. And finally, my central office staff, I can't thank them enough. That's the thing, those are the people I bounce things off. Normally, they tell me it's a good idea or it's not a good idea. Mr. Locerson, it's like a father to me over there. But Mr. Locerson, obviously, special education has been invaluable during this time. The challenges that our special needs students have faced and trying to work through that, whether it's an IDP, whether it's different accommodations that we need to make, he's been invaluable with that. And of course, Mrs. Pedroza on the curriculum and making changes, especially working with the professional development. Diane has done a great job, and of course, Alex. With all the different things that I always dread when Alex comes in and says, I just want to give you a heads up. I know it's not a good thing, but nine times out of 10, it's settled before I really get involved with it. So I want to thank Alex for all he does. And finally, Mr. Lorenzen with the finances. And I've been very fortunate in my career to have two excellent business administrators. One has retired, Mr. Lorenzen has been with me from Central Regional to here. And it's an area that, one of the things that I appreciate is when I say we need something for education, we need something for some safety, we need this, we find a way to get it done. And I don't know how he does it, I don't want to know how he does it. But he has the funds there and really were able to get the funds to our students and to our staff and make their job easier. So that's a lot of people, but you can tell that's what makes this district. If there was any area that was weak, that would make this district. But we are strong in all those areas, and they take pride in what they do. If you listen to like Anne or Charlene talk about the district, they have a passion for the district because it's more than just teachers, it's colleagues and friends and so forth. And that's what makes this district so special. So it's my time in American Education Week to say thank you for all that you guys do. Again, a lot of times, and you say it a lot, we're all, sometimes you're overlooked of what you do. And I want to say today, we're not overlooked, we want to make sure that everybody gets recognized. So again, from the bottom of my heart, thank you so much for what you do. I'm going to bring up some representatives here, starting off with the Manchester Township Education Association. I believe Mr. Staples is here. He is, come on up, Mr. Staples. I think I'm going to get a group photo, is that right? Okay. Don't make me come down, I just wanted to. Okay, there you go. Thank you. You can certainly say a few things, go right ahead.
Regional Superintendent of the Year right there.
Yeah. That was it? Oh, God. I was waiting for more. You can say, I'm going to give you a little bit more, no? Our confidential staff unit, come on down. Beth Bell. Suzanne. I'm sure the rest of the staff is watching you guys come down on Zoom or wherever. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, there's only one sitting here, you guys are sharing.
That's it, let's go.
They do have coordinated offices. Do you want to say, we got to say a few words? Yeah, that's why they call them confidential, they don't say a word. And our administrative staff, Mr. Nunez, come on up. You're going to say a few words?
I just want to, I would like to echo, I have something to say.
Where's Anna when you need her?
I just wanted to echo what Mr. Tretheway said. I want to, you know, from our perspective as administrators, I see our fellow administrators in the last six or seven months have really, I think have worked harder than they ever have before. And it's been worth it to see, you know, our teachers who are working so hard. And, you know, it was, I think, the best day that we've had in the many, many months that we were here was in September. We saw those children getting off the bus finally and coming back to school. We're looking forward to when all the kids can be coming back to school. Hopefully, that'll be very soon. I want to thank all our whole district for all the effort they did put in.
Thank you, Mr. Nunez. Picture?
That's it?
That's it. I'm not photobombing, is that my? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think we have some presentations to go up. I think, Mrs. Pedroza, are you ready to go first?
Yeah.
Thank you. Are we on the big screen?
We are.
Oh, we're on the big screen, so we're going to have to move down a little. Can we do that record? Or we can stay here? Just one announcement, we have a guest, I did not see Nick in the audience. He's our student representative, and he would like to teach because he's got a lot of homework he's got to do. He wants to go real early, get his work done. So Nick, the floor is yours, come on and say a few words. Thank you.
Hello, everyone, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So my name is Nick Wizisfordin, and as the Manchester Township Senior Class President, I'm here on behalf of the class of 2021. So I have a few announcements to make tonight, and I'll make it quick because I know you've got a lot of presentations.
You guys are cool, you got it.
Yes, so first, I'd like to congratulate the girls' cross-country team for placing fourth in the sexualist tournament for the Southern Region. I would also like to congratulate the boys' soccer team for their eight-to-one win against Asbury Park. That win put them into the semifinals in the state tournament. So speaking of our athletics, as we near the winter sports season, we are holding our winter sports introductory meetings for all sports such as basketball, swimming, wrestling, winter track, et cetera. And then, along with our athletics, we also have some fundraisers that the school is going forward for. So we have our Kevin's Kids fundraiser that we do every year, it's run by the NHS. So anybody's allowed to donate any gift cards from any businesses of any value, and they go to kids who may not be able to get some presents this year for Christmas. And we also have Cheers holding a Christmas decor fundraiser. So they're selling things like wreaths, they call them kissing balls, but they're really mistletoe. And anything else, Christmas decor for their future events. Okay, so the Helping Hands for Hunger fundraiser is run by the SGA and Leadership Seminar Class at Manchester Township High School. So they are accepting any gift cards from ShopRite of any value, and they're giving them to families who may not be able to afford their Thanksgiving dinners. Last but not least, we have our Marching Band's clothing drive. I don't know if anybody's ever heard. The Marching Band is doing a clothing drive, collecting anything like clothes, purses, hats, anything like that, and then donating it to our local clothing drive. That's all the announcements I have for tonight, but before I leave, I would just like to thank the board for, well, actually, the class of 2021. I'd like to thank the board for all of the cooperation they put forth towards our school just for being able to hold the homecoming game and the homecoming court. You know, we know that your guys' jobs are not at all easy. So we'd just like to really thank you from the bottom of our hearts for having us, being able to do at least something. So thank you, really appreciate it.
Back again, now, it's tradition now, you got to tell us a little bit about what you're doing and what your goals are. You're a vice president now, right?
No, I'm senior class president.
Oh, so you're class president, excuse me, I'm sorry. So tell me a little bit about what you've been doing at school and some of your goals.
So as a senior, I've been applying to a couple of colleges. I plan on majoring in criminal justice and psychology. I want to be a law enforcement officer and with, you know, future aspirations of becoming a police detective.
Hey, great.
Yeah, I actually also am a boy scout. I just recently have scheduled my board of review for Eagle Scout.
Hey, congratulations. So Mr. Maloney, give you some tips on the police officer, is that right? Thank you, Nick, great job, thank you, thank you.
Great job.
So Nick went to school at Ridgeway, and when he was there, he was actually shorter than me, am I right, Nick? Although this didn't work too well here, Nick, so I was very inclined to get to you. So I'm going to try to bring this down. Do we have a list for me in the background? Okay, thank you. So good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for joining us tonight, and I'd like to begin by welcoming all of you and letting you know that the curriculum department is pleased to present the test scores and also some of our local data. With me this evening is Michelle Nichols, she's our elementary supervisor. Marlene Moore, who was our supervisor, six through 12 of math and also science. She also helps with our special education. And Melissa Arsino, grade six through 12, who supports ELA. She also helps very much with ELL and also social studies. So thank you so much, give her a nice hand, your turn. So I'd like to begin just by giving a little bit of background. My apologies to some of you who have seen some of this information before. It seems like we just keep going over some of the same data. However, we look at it with a very different lens each time we look at the data, and it is a requirement of our New Jersey Single Accountability Continuum, which you'll hear me refer to as QSAK. As some of you may be aware, this year, Manchester Township School District is in a QSAK year, which means that we will be monitored by the Department of Ed. That will be done remotely. Of course, you know that things have changed due to the pandemic, and so when you're doing this accountability system, data becomes a big part of it. The data that we will be using for this process is the data of the last NJSLA, which took place in 1819 because there was no spring testing administration. However, there is a requirement in the new QSAK for us to once again present before December 15th this data and also share with you any local data that we have. So we'll be doing that. Some of this seems repetitive, we're going to go through some of the slides a little bit more quickly because they are things that we have gone over with you. We went over this data initially in October of 2019. That's a state requirement, we need to present this to the public, 60 days of when we get the actual data. We then actually shared in December of last year the data again and talked about next steps in what we were doing. And then, of course, more recently, in May, we presented the performance reports. What I can tell you is that I'm going in very, very happy and positive to this QSAK because our data is really, really good. And we are going into the QSAK monitoring, knowing that in instruction and programming, we're in a very, very good position. And as long as we beat all the other indicators, we feel confident that the district will do well and we will be considered a high-performing school. So the data that we have and the steps that we've taken include reviewing NJSLA test scores. And even though we were remote since the spring, we still had a lot of PD that we offered. For many of you who are familiar with Dr. Tracy Severn, she formerly was a commissioner of the New Jersey Department of Ed. She's a guru in data. She met with the administrative team and the teachers last summer, and more recently, she met with us again. She also provided PDs for opening day to our middle school and our high school, and she will continue to do that. In addition to that, we have committee meetings, assessment meetings. I just sat on an assessment meeting at Ridgeway today. These are the things that we're doing regardless of what's going on in our district. We still have to stay focused on student achievement. We still need to make sure that we are doing the very best for our students. And I can tell you wholeheartedly, that is what the staff is doing. These steps that we're going to go over, this is best practice, and it is done at every level, elementary, middle school, and high school. We let the data speak for itself, we let the data tell the story. So when we look at data, we look at the demographic data, we look at the perception data, and then we look at the process data. We look at benchmarking, we analyze grade level and content area trends. And so you'll see that's done at every level. We do scatter plots, we make sure that we're isolating the standards that we need to target for our students. This also lets us know that we focus on the New Jersey Two Systems of Support. That has been very critical for us, it's important. And now more than ever, NJTSS is key to what we're doing, not just only academically, but also for the socio-emotional aspect of our students. As you can see, the last bullet talks about the enhancement of our gifted and talented program. That actually is legislation, and it's still went through for this year. As a legislative team, they still wanted us to be focused on our GNT students. And we feel that's very, very important because sometimes the conversations are only about the students that are not performing well. But we need to talk about the children that are at that advanced level or have talents that we need to continue to develop. So that is part of when we look at our data. The next thing, and you'll see throughout the slides, is that we've included links to our previous presentations, both the October presentation and also the performance presentation that was done in May. I'm going to hand this over to Mrs. Nichols at this point, and she's going to talk about the elementary level.
So one thing we've done this school year is we've really enhanced our basic skills program at the elementary level. We now have an interventionist model where our basic skills teachers are really targeted to specific grade levels in which they assist. Their primary role is really to act as a team leader on that grade level. It's targeted to ELA or to math. They assist the classroom teachers and were a tremendous support in our one-on-one assessments that we were able to give at the beginning of the school year. We thought it was really important that we collected the most accurate data. So those teachers were really amazing at getting our students to take one-on-one assessments, supporting them through Zoom, inviting our students who were full virtual into our school to take those assessments most effectively in our buildings. They are our data experts, they collect data on an ongoing basis, they inform the classroom teachers and where students are struggling. They're able to pull students when our students are on live instruction, so we're able to maximize the engagement that those students have while they're learning during our school hours. They also pull one-on-one instruction during our school day when the students are in our classrooms. They are targeting the skills based on the areas of weakness, and they really feel very good about how effective they've been this school year. They are providing differentiated learning assignments for students while they're in the classroom during their independent learning work, and they really are assisting our families and supporting our children while they're at home. We're reporting right now on our 2018-2019 data. So we pulled in some local data, which is our iReady scores for 2019-2020, which was last school year. We were able to give the beginning-of-the-year diagnostic assessment and the middle-of-the-year diagnostic assessment. Unfortunately, with remote learning, iReady did not recommend us giving that full assessment at home, so we gave some alternative assessments, which were called standards mastery assessments, which were able to give our teachers some direct data based on the standards that we instructed during remote learning. But as you can see on this chart for reading, in the beginning of the year in the fall, you'll see the colors, the dark green are students who are mid or above grade level. The light green are students who are early grade level. Yellow is one grade level below. Our light red is two grade levels below, and our dark red is three-plus grade levels below. You can see that we made tremendous growth from our beginning of the year to our middle of the year. And we have the majority of our students either on grade level or just slightly below. We would have really hoped to be able to give that end-of-the-year assessment. Unfortunately, we didn't. But even going into this school year, we have not seen that much deficits in terms of our data based on beginning of the fall last year and beginning of the fall of this year. And iReady really is reporting that nationwide, reading. Students in reading are not falling too short or they're not showing as much deficits as we would have expected. This is another form of data that iReady gives to our leadership team, which is really great data because it shows, based on the fall and the winter, how we are performing in each one of the domains on the iReady test based on national averages. So students nationwide, taking the iReady assessment in the fall and in the winter during the same time of year. during the same time of year, the same group, the same age of little students, and how we're performing. We can see that we are doing very well in almost all of these domains compared to our, compared to the national average. It's really important to note that phonics really stands out as being above the national average. What we're doing with foundations and all that we're doing to support our students and cater to with those phonics and language programs is really working well. This is our math data. So, as you know, we implemented the Ready Classroom Mathematics Program last school year for grades two through five. This year, we've adopted it for K-1. We were able to take the fall diagnostic, and you'll see the results on the left. And then, our mid-year diagnostic is the results to the right. We did make tremendous progress. And obviously, our red has really, had really diminished significantly. And as we analyzed this data, we really took a look at the data in terms of those yellow students and how we can differentiate and fill in the prerequisite gaps. This is also the performance by domain in terms of mathematics. You can see how we performed in fall and winter compared to the national average. One area of focus that we have been focusing on is numbers and operations and really, basic number sense. The reason why our teachers really support this program and they believe in it is because it really is starting to develop strong number sense in our students. So, we can hope that all of those percentages would go up as we begin to implement all of the new strategies. We know that all of our students need, in elementary school, rigorous grade-level instruction, differentiated instruction, independent, authentic learning, conferencing, goal-setting, assessment and data analysis, active learning, student-centered classrooms, and motivation and engagement. There's a lot that goes into our elementary classrooms and our teachers work extremely hard. But we are really proud of our programs. And we appreciate the board supporting and allowing us to purchase these programs year in year. We do have our systematic phonics instruction with foundations. And we appreciate all of the professional development that we get each year to make sure that that's successful. We give rigorous grade-level instruction because that's equally important through our Ready Reading Program, as well as our reading fundamentals and cross-curricular units. We do and believe highly in guided reading to differentiate our instruction. We use daily five and independent learning activities. We have novel studies and ongoing data analysis. For writing, our Writers Workshop Program is really built on that six-plus-one traits of writing. And we use the Writing Fundamentals units. And in math, with our math program, we do support a high-quality systematic instruction. We promote those mathematical practices. We really want to develop a strong math culture. We differentiate. And we have ongoing data chats and data analysis with our teachers to make sure that we're addressing all the learning gaps with our students.
Good evening. As Mrs. Pedrosa stated, the middle school and the elementary and the high school all have similar meetings. So, at the middle school, we had targeted building-level assessment committees. We had building-level meetings and grade-level meetings where teachers and administrators analyzed data. Teachers actually led articulation meetings and faculty meetings to talk about the tiered system of supports that are in place for our students. In order to analyze the data, some of the professional development that we provided for teachers included school-wide, where teachers learned about Writers Workshop. Notice and Note was actually teacher-driven professional development that teachers provided to their colleagues. ERG provided math professional development as well. Teachers created daily exercises that were standards-based for students to practice the skills that they would need to succeed on the NJSLA and in language arts and math in general. But they also practiced those skills in social studies and science as well. Sarah Stevenson provided socio-emotional learning professional development to our staff, students, and we even had a parent night. And our Title I Basic Skills After-School Programs were also in place.
What you're looking, what you're looking at, they're all very short, sorry. What you're looking at up here are the data charts from Lincoln. And it, just like the elementary, we were able to give the first benchmark and a second benchmark in math and ELA last year. Unfortunately, we were not able to give the third benchmark. But if you look at the chart that is on the left side for each grade level, the upper left is your sixth grade, then you have seventh grade, and on the bottom is eighth grade. You can see already the growth that is taking place by the time that they take the benchmark B. We would have really liked to have seen the results of benchmarks C, but unfortunately, that we were not able to do so. But we anticipate that that growth was going on. And in, beginning indicators from this year, that it shows that there was growth taking place. So, we were very happy about that. This is the math results that you're looking at. And this is our ELA. And again, you can see the progression. You want, you want all those bars to move over to the right. So, you can see the progression happening. And again, Benchmark A, Benchmark B, sixth, seventh, and eighth grades were those particular results. At the middle school, we also have started changing up our basic skills program and creating an interventionist program. This program is supported by platforms at this time, iXL and Achieve 3000. iXL is for mathematics, Achieve 3000 for ELA. This program has teachers meeting, the basic skills teachers meeting with students in either very small or one-to-one instruction with their basic skill students. This is, in addition, it's additional time to the regular math class. So, not only do they have regular math, but then they have additional time during the school day with the teacher for this program. Also, the teachers use their hour after-school remote time with those kids. That's what they do. The basic skills teachers meet with their basic skill students after school. In addition to that, there are also Title I programs at the middle school that are available for all basic skill students after school that we encourage parents to have their kids sign up for. In addition to that, the ELA started up with StudySync this, this year. This program is an excellent program for collecting data. And again, we're just at the starting point of getting that data together and analyzing and understanding what the results are for that. Social Studies also is a new text that we purchased last year for this year. And again, it's a new text, so we're just getting information about that, but it supports the ELA initiatives in the building. In addition to that, our ESL population is now using System 44 Rosetta Stone to help increase their proficiency and anguish.
Professional development for, at the middle school included StudySync. Teachers had quite a few PD sessions where they're learning about the platform. Most recently, they just had a data and reporting professional development session. There's one more data and reporting session that's scheduled for January. For System 44, the ESL teachers at the middle and high school were provided with six hours of professional learning. And they are participating in monthly two-hour coaching sessions with the coach from System 44 to support their efforts with students in the classroom and data analysis and reporting. Achieve 3000 was used in the summer program for basic skills at the high school and the middle school. Professional development was provided to those teachers. And also, in the fall, we had more professional development for basic skills teachers using Achieve 3000. Rosetta Stone, the teachers had, ESL teachers had platform training. The sessions on a lot of these professional developments were recorded by the companies as they were providing that professional development and can be used as a reference for teachers moving forward.
Also, this is a history lesson here. The high school has an amazing assessment committee. The high school administration does a wonderful job in gathering their teachers and really digging into the data that they're getting, either from state tests, in-building tests. And what they do is they break it down and they identify the weaknesses. One of the things that they discovered was that definitely the students coming from eighth grade that were identified as having difficulty going into ninth grade needed better support. So, they came up with the idea with the middle school administration to develop a program, AIM, that where the, Mr. Tifo would go into the middle school, meet with kids, identify, talk to the kids, and work with them with the eighth-grade guidance counselor about their difficulties with the content of their classes. Any kids that do not kind of step it up by the end of the year were identified to go to an AIM program over the summer, which was an intensive program on content, individualized for those kids. If they still were having difficulty then, the classes that they were required to take were Foundations of English and a pre-algebra course that is supported by iXL, which provides very quick data for the teachers to provide that instruction. Through the year, again, professional development is about data. Last year, we had ERG. This year, we have Dennis Sheeran come in. And it's just getting the teachers to understand how they can create data, use data, and use it for their instruction. So, and we will continue to have articulation with Lakehurst as we move forward.
You'll see, this is a sampling of the Benchmark 1 and 2 data. You'll see that the dark red, the dark blue rather, represents reading and the light blue represents writing. You'll see some increases and some decreases. This is Benchmark 3. And you'll see that we've made some strides in reading and writing. But we have our work to do. Our work is cut out for us and we understand that. So, we, this was, this is, this year will give us some comparative data to look at from Common Lit. And that's what we use in the New Jersey line of data.
That, that actually, I just want to add to that. That is actually, that actually is a complete picture what Mrs. Aracino showed you. Because we have block scheduling at the high school, that actually was given in September, then November, then again, I think, at the end of January. So, what we're seeing is the first bit of data that we can look at, a full picture. Understand that all of these books are fairly new at the high school. There's, we're still providing PD and implementation. And Common Lit, I believe, is in the second year that we've been using it. Last year was the first year when we did it. So, it's great data for us to use and we're still using that data. But it was nice to be able to see a complete picture. And as you can see, you know, where we want kids to be by the 12th grade is to be over to that right. And that's the picture that we see there. Thank you, Mrs. Aracino.
So, we're looking at instructional practices, digging into providing professional development to provide better engagement for our kids in the hybrid situation. So, again, a lot of PD, instructional materials. That falls under Big Ideas. We just purchased Big Ideas for the high school. The high school teachers really needed that to acquire formative assessment data at a faster pace. They really did not have any platform before that. They were trying to build it themselves. And it really is very beneficial. Inside that platform, there's actually a progress monitoring aspect to it, which is awesome. So, again, it's real-time data and information for the teachers to help better target their kids. We also are having data conferences with them. Again, it's the assessment committee, meeting with the teachers, meeting with individual teachers, and really talking about digging into the data. Socio-emotional learning is, again, a continuous thing. It's an initiative in this district. And we follow through with it up at the high school also. So, again, these are the programs all supporting those things. I know it's a little repetitive, but it all contains Achieve 3000, System 44, iXL, iReady, and Big Ideas, the monitoring program. So, these are the things that we're using to help create the data that we're using to identify how to help, best help our kids. And these are professional developments. And all these professional developments, if you look at them, most of them deal with either to use a platform, provide instruction, or how to really understand the data that a platform provides for the school district. And that's it. Thank you very much.
I don't know if you have any questions. So, do you want to have any questions? Mr. Morrison, is now the time to see questions from the public? Or we wait till the end about the presentation? Are there any questions from the public? Anything, Mr. Rousher? No? Okay, thank you so much. Have a good night, everybody, and happy Thanksgiving.
We're going to stay right here and Mr. George is going to talk a little bit about the self-assessment for our HIB, which is a requirement. So, I'm going to turn the program over to him. He's going to use some slides here too, I guess. Alex, right?
That would be great, yeah.
Okay, very good.
Good evening, everybody. One of the things that, you know, as we work through this year and focus, one of the things that we still need to kind of bring some conclusion to is last year. And every year, as the district anti-bullying coordinator, I present the self-assessment from all the buildings that is done in the springtime. And just to give you an idea, we have at least two anti-bullying specialists, sometimes three in each of our buildings. And we work together very closely throughout the school year. And one of the things that we do at the end of the year is come together and take a look at where our programs are in regards to our HIB initiatives. And what the state wants us to do is look at a number of different core elements, different indicators, and give ourselves a self-assessment score. And then, in the fall, we present that information to the Board of Education. And then, we input that information into the state website as a part of that process. So, also, one of the things that the anti-bullying specialists do is we input all of our trainings and programs that the district is involved in twice a year. There's a fall reporting period and a spring reporting period. So, all that kind of information is reflected. What we're looking at is the 1920, actually, that's incorrect. It's the 1920 school year that we are, that we're taking a look at. So, when we talk about the core elements and the different areas that we're looking at, what I try to do here is give you an idea of what are the buildings asked to take a look at in regards to assessing ourselves. So, core element number one is HIB programs, approaches, and other initiatives. And here, we're asking ourselves questions like, have schools established, implemented, and assessed programs? Are they designed to prevent and address HIB? Has the school safety team, SST stands for School Safety Team, looked for patterns and reviewed school climate and policies? So, here, we give ourselves, as an average district score, 13 out of a possible 15 points in regards to that area. Core element number two is training on the Board of Education-approved HIB policy and procedure. Here, we're asking ourselves, is training provided for everybody? Do we include training on the protected categories? Was it discussed with students? And here, we gave ourselves a score of 7.8 out of 9 in regards to those areas. In core element number three, we're looking at other staff instruction and training programs. Here, we gave ourselves a 12 out of a possible 15 points. And again, the questions here are, has each staff member received two hours of HIB training? Does the training include suicide prevention? Does the school safety team get PD to support the programs? Those are some of the questions that we're asking ourselves at that point. In core element number four, curriculum instruction on HIB and other related information and skills, we gave ourselves a score of 6 out of 6. We do provide age-appropriate instruction. And are we observing the week of respect? The week of respect is the week that's observed every year in October. And we've got lots of activities and things that are scheduled around that. In core element number five, HIB personnel, does each school have an anti-bullying... Uh, in core element number five, HIB personnel, does each school have an anti-bullying specialist and a school safety team? Do they meet twice a year at the school and the district level? Uh, and we do, we gave ourselves an 8.7 out of nine in that area. In area number six, school-level HIB incident reporting, we gave ourselves a 5.8 out of six. Does the schools implement the district procedure? Uh, in core element number seven, HIB investigative procedures, we gave ourselves a 12 out of 12. Do the schools follow the district policy by notifying parents, completing the investigation in 10 days, and preparing a report for the superintendent? And, uh, and in our last area, HIB, uh, HIB reporting, again, a six out of six. Is there a procedure for staff reporting HIB? And are we posting the grades on the school and the district website? Uh, so our district score is a 71 out of 78. Uh, and in a lot of these categories, it's a zero to three. So we're asking, are we meeting the, the requirements or are we exceeding the requirements? And so a lot of the time, if, if a score of 52 means we're meeting all of our requirements, and so you can see that we are, you know, consistently, uh, not just meeting, but exceeding our requirements. Now again, as I said, this, this takes place in each of the buildings. Uh, so here's a look at the, at the buildings. Again, we do meet regularly as a district committee, and then I attend all the building committees. So there's a lot of collaboration and a lot of conversation that goes out. You don't see too much, uh, variation in regards to the scores because we're implementing a lot of the programs. And I think when you look at last year, a couple of the, uh, real challenges were when we got to the point where we were looking to assess the programs. Some programs, we weren't even able to complete the entire program as the school year went virtual. Uh, we were able to meet virtually and do things like that, but certainly when I think the buildings were back and said, are we able to exceed those expectations? Do we have the documentation that we would need in order to exceed them? I think those were some, some areas where the schools might have given themselves a two as opposed to a three because we were confident that we met that. But given the confines of the remote learning environment and not being able to complete some of the programs, um, it became difficult to do it. So when you look at some of the, the key findings and the strengths in, in some of our areas, obviously, there's a couple of areas where we gave ourselves exceeding expectations, that we're doing all the things that we need to be doing. And those are things that certainly we celebrate and, and we look forward to, to completing. And then there's some other areas, um, where we were very close. And again, I think when you look at the difference between a 97, or an 87, or an 80 in terms of the percentages, you really get to that conversation about exceeding expectations. And a lot of time there came from a result of not having the time to go to some trainings for our anti-bullying specialists, or not being able to get the whole school safety team together to go to a training or take part in some things. Um, which, again, did not allow us to exceed. Because certainly there's, there are strengths in all of these different areas, and we really take, we take a lot of pride and we work very hard. And I, I have to thank all the building anti-bullying specialists because, you know, we want to provide these warm and supportive environments. And, um, so when we look back and we, we always assess ourselves and we reflect on how the year went, uh, they can be their own toughest critics sometimes in terms of, you know, exceeding expectations and, and meeting expectations. Um, but we do feel very good about, um, about the work that, that we were able to do. Uh, and some of the other areas, you can see, like I said, where we're at 87% or 80%, um, those were just really the opportunity that we didn't have to bring the whole team together or go to some trainings, or to fully assess a program that we weren't able to implement throughout the course of the year. Um, I think, you know, the other thing that we're, we're talking about, and certainly this year more than ever, and when we had our first district-wide, we've already had our first district-wide meeting this year, I think a couple of the, the things that were, it's good to hear about in talking to the anti-bullying specialists in the buildings and creating these warm climates, it's never been more important, obviously, than it is right now. Uh, and just hearing the stories about how happy the kids are to be in the building. We're not seeing, uh, too many situations that are revolving around cyberbullying. And those are some of the things that, you know, we really were sensitive to coming into the year and want to make sure that we're trying to be vigilant around. And, uh, you know, the feedback from the buildings and the counselors is that the kids are just happy to be in the buildings, the environments are very positive in the buildings, and, and certainly that's, uh, very good to hear. Also hearing stories about the opportunity to use some of the remote platforms for counselors to reach out to kids from our home, um, is something that, that is, that is important. Obviously, the SEL initiatives throughout the district, the teachers are working extremely hard to really connect with the kids who are in the building or who might be at the home. And, and when I talk about what the, the school environment looks like, you know, it's like teachers are trying to be their regular energetic passion itself in the building, and they're also trying to provide like a perfect Netflix version of that, um, to their, to their students at home. And, and I think that they're just using every opportunity and resource available to connect with kids and, and, uh, and talking to the counselors and the support staff. Certainly, there's a lot of outreach going on this year to, to try and provide that. We've also, you know, we're trying to provide more resources for parents, and that's been brought up by the board, um, making sure that our website is very easy to navigate so that parents know the different programs that are out there. Um, it's an incredibly challenging year, but you can see that, obviously, the things that we've done and have been successful in the past, we are continuing to work on this year and, and hopefully expand as we need to provide, you know, families just with more resources as, as we kind of go through this, this difficult time from a, from an SEL perspective. And I think when you talk about harassment intimidation, bullying, a lot of it is really about positive school environments, and certainly we work very hard at that every year. This is the year that, uh, that we're in overdrive trying to make sure that we provide everybody with the resources and things that they need. Any questions on any of the, uh, any of the information on the slides? Again, this was all from last year. It, uh, once it's approved by the board, it will be uploaded into the, into the system as part of our, our ongoing requirements for the New Jersey Department of Education. Okay? Thank you very much.
All right. Uh, is that how we continue our meeting then? Uh, Mr. Trentwyke, do you have your report for the month?
I do, and, and, and much of it has been said already. Um, but real quick, just to talk a little bit, Diane had mentioned, Mrs. Pedrosa had mentioned something about CUSAC. Um, and that's our district's gonna be going through that county, it's County Monitoring System on New Jersey quality, Single Economy Continuum, which is NJ, uh, Q-SAC, CUSAC. Uh, on the agenda today, we'll be asking the board to approve our self-evaluation as part of the process. Uh, CUSAC has five areas, is Instruction and Program, Fiscal Management, Governance, Personnel, and Operations. The district completed its self-evaluation process through work done by committees in these five areas. And each area had a number of indicators and responsibilities that must be completed, and they will be remote, uh, they'll be monitored, but this year remotely by the county. Uh, the self-evaluation scores must be board-approved and submitted to the county by December 15th. The county will then, uh, conduct the, the review beginning in January. We were told that no reviews will begin until the, the first of the year. Uh, once the county reviews our documentation, they will also provide their scores. Uh, there was some indication in the beginning that there would not be any monitoring in the school districts due to the unique situation through the pandemic. Uh, several areas such as the self-evaluation for tenured staff and state assessments were not included as a result of the pandemic. Uh, there were legislation that was proposed and actually brought up, uh, recently as today, to exempt districts from the CUSAC. But at this time, uh, the requirements are still there and, and we're proceeding as if they will still be there. I want to personally thank Mrs. Pedrosa for chairing the various committees, and thank the staff, uh, who, who participated, among our teaching staff and administrators, and also Mr. Payton for representing the board and contributing to the, to the governance area. Uh, on the board, I'll be recommending the approval of a computer tech Level One staff member as previously discussed, uh, with the board. I'll submit it, uh, we were, uh, new job description is, is in there, and, uh, uh, Mr. Rousher, Mr. George, and myself actually conducted the interviews, and, uh, that will be a welcome addition. Uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Rousher's staff has really been overwhelmed by a lot of different things, and, uh, he's reallocating some members to the staff. But this person will be a, a ground-level start, uh, and be doing a lot of the, uh, hardware stuff, a lot of things, and, and doing some software, but, uh, working a lot with the teachers, working around and trying to troubleshoot it and, and getting, uh, any problems up and even some students, uh, while, uh, the other people are relocated to different areas. So I want to thank Mr. Rousher for, uh, for working through that. And finally, the changes in student schedules, uh, that we are announcing. And, you know, I've been meeting with the administrators in each of the buildings to review the data from the surveys. And I want to thank the parents, uh, for, uh, completing the surveys out there. Uh, I know it was a, it was, these are very tough decisions and they're personal decisions. Uh, and, and, and our choice is not to say whether you do remote or whether you do in-person, or whether you do four days. Uh, that's not our choice to make. It's, it's a choice for you as parents to make that, and, and I appreciate you giving us input and, on what you, what you choose. Uh, after reviewing the data, uh, at this time, I, I do not believe it's feasible to bring all the students back who choose to come back on a five-day rotation uh, because of the increases in the virus and the health and safety guidelines that need to be in place. But it is important to have that plan in place. It, it was great to see so many parents opting for students to come back for in-person. Uh, right now, uh, we are concentrating and contacting parents of students who are currently remote-only and have requested to come back for in-person instruction. We had made that commitment that for the first marking period, if you chose remote, you would stay the first marking period, but you would have an option of, of coming back in-person at the end of the first marking period. So, uh, the, the administrators are making phone calls to the parents to make sure that the, uh, the information is correct on the survey. And the plan is to have those students who are remote-only and not to go back in-person to come back on November 30th. This will give us enough time to ensure that the placement will meet the safety guidelines and also to coordinate with transportation. Uh, the number alone in, in, uh, right now is, we will have approximately 275, 280 students, uh, that are moving back from remote to, uh, in-person instruction. They will be going to, uh, the hybrid model, uh, but it, it'll be great to see, uh, those numbers of students come back from remote-only to in-person. Uh, we've been fortunate up to this point that we have had several isolated cases, but no cases of anyone contracting the virus in school and no cases of any spread within schools. The reality, that, that really is attributed to the health and safety procedures we've been in place, but just as important is the result of the students and the staff following the, the wearing the mask, the social distancing, and, and taking all those precautions. I can't say enough about how our parents and students and staff have worked to continue to make the schools a safe area, so I, I really appreciate that. Uh, right now, as I said, with the, with the holidays coming up, we'll have an additional 275, 280 students coming to school. And it's important that we remain cautious and make sure that we don't take a step backwards. Uh, there are several schools that have, have been forced to go back on remote-only. Uh, we have been very fortunate, and again, I, I tribute to staff and the students and the parents and the safety things that we've been put in place. But with that being said, we are reviewing the data, and our ultimate goal is to bring the students back on a five-day schedule for those students who want to come back. Uh, so we will have that plan in place when that, when that situation arises. We will discuss that, of course, with the board. We'll discuss that with our reopening committees, uh, to make sure that we have everything in place when they get to it, but that is our ultimate goal. Uh, finally, I want to just mention, uh, and I'm gonna ask Mr. George to talk a little bit really about Kevin's Kids and just give us a snapshot of where we are because under these situations where we're going, um, it was, we were concerned about maybe not being able to do that, and that has been going on. And I, I know Mr. Payton, I'm, I'm trying to think how many years it's been. It's gotta be...
Thirty-eight, I believe.
What is it, thirty-eight?
Yeah.
Thirty-eight years.
I was gonna say forty, so it's...
Yeah, well, you, you, yeah, exactly. So it's a tradition in Manchester, and, and most superintendents I talk to are just amazed at that, this whole program. And it has nothing to do really with me. It's something that, uh, was started and it, it, it's caught on with the staff and it's a part of Manchester tradition, it's unique to Manchester. So just talk a little bit, Mr. George, about where we are and what we can hope to see with Kevin's Kids?
Yeah, so, uh, we are running kind of a modified, uh, Kevin's Kids program. Uh, again, the goal is to help the families of Manchester. And so we have reached out to the businesses in the community, um, and there are a number of businesses that we're working with in terms of collecting gifts and, and, uh, from, from that perspective, so that's going on. Uh, we work with the Knights of Columbus and lots of different, uh, Senior Villages are all working on, uh, donating different things and, and working in those areas. So our plan is to, uh, have the, have our event culminate December 13th. It, it will be the day that it will culminate. Uh, and our goal is to, to support the families however we can. And we understand it's a, it's a difficult year on all fronts, but, uh, to Mr. Trentwyke's point, it is important to the buildings, it's important to the school community, um, that we continue this, this important tradition, so, um, we're looking forward to doing it. Uh, and, and in years past, we've also had a shopping day where we went out and, and, uh, with the monies that were donated, shopped for our students. Uh, we, we look to try to implement that piece as well this year, given what the guidelines might look like on the weekend of the 12th and 13th. Uh, there's also a wrapping day, which I think will be more difficult to do this year just with all the social distancing and the guidelines from that perspective. Uh, but those things are kind of to be determined as, as things progress. But our goal is to help as many families as possible, and, uh, again, I just can't thank all the, all the members of the community and everybody in the buildings that's working so hard on behalf of our families.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Uh, is, is there, November 30th, is there something going on at Chipotle for Kevin's Kids as well?
Yes, there is a fundraiser at Chipotle on November 30th. Uh, everything is on, on the district website in regards to all the fundraisers and the dates. Uh, but yeah.
Mr. George, I'm sorry. Are you, are you finding that there are more families in need this year as a result of COVID and job loss?
It is our expectation that there will be more families in need, and, and we're going through the process now of trying to identify and work with those families. And, um, but again, as we always say, we're gonna work really hard and we're gonna fundraise them, we're gonna collect, and we're gonna distribute.
Make it work, absolutely.
Yep, so, uh, we're looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, it's amazing how so many of the outside organizations were contacting you early on and saying...
Absolutely, I'm standing, I was just saying, Knights of Columbus, we're ready to go. Is that, is that still a go? Senior Villages, businesses in town, it's, uh, it's been great.
And just one other side, I see Mrs. Tipo back there. I know the Helping Hands for Hunger, and I think we've gotten a big boost from, uh, and I, I want to thank you above from the police department, from what I understand. Uh, are they contributing something on the Helping Hands? Sarah, do you have, have anything to say on that?
Sure, yes. Um, we are just kind of wrapping up Helping Hands for Hunger. We've been very fortunate, um, because obviously, uh, the current, uh, situation we have changed a little bit. We actually, we're giving families gift cards this year to be able to go and do their own shopping at the local grocery store or truck right. But yes, this would not be possible without our co-sponsors, the Manchester Township Police Department, who gave an extremely generous donation, but families have already been contacted. And again, it should be wrapping up in the next two days. Um, the Helping Hands for Hunger Committee has just been fantastic at all the different schools, and of course, they support the administrators. Um, it's just amazing how it still came together. Um, so we're, we're really thrilled to be able to do that for everyone today.
Oh, thank you for, for helping on that, Sarah. Thank you. Uh, and, and just to finalize, and, and a number of things that have been mentioned on the, uh, SEL and some of the things, the activities, and, and, uh, we'll, we'll probably coordinate a little bit more, I'm gonna coordinate more with Lee as far as highlighting some of those activities that are there, so they're easy accessible on the webpage. They're out there, but I think we probably need to do a media list to get that out because there's so many, uh, parents in need. And, and I'm gonna probably put Mr. George in that spot, so I'd like it to work with the guidance counselors and see if we can maybe, uh, do a, a program, uh, if, if not December, January, and make some, make it a, a program that we can do at the board meeting to, to get those programs out there available, make it easier for the, our, our parents to access. So, if you can look into that and then get back to me if you can do that. Okay, and that is my report. Mr. Lorenz, anything?
Yeah, I got a couple of things. These are items on the agenda. First one is, for those of you who are not aware of it, there was something called the Lissa's Law that came out a while ago and this year, part of Lissa's Law was to make sure every school district was in compliance and to be in compliance, you had to have some way, some kind of panic button in every school that would notify the police immediately of something going on in your district. What we did was, we submitted our SHARE 911 program that we use here in the district as meeting the requirement that was submitted for review to the state. They agreed that the SHARE 911 program does meet the requirement for Lissa's Law, so the funding they had set aside for us to be in compliance can now be used for other security measures in the district. We received $163,000 as part of this grant, so what we are going to do is, we are going to continue our surveillance camera installation. With this funding, we will be able to do the remaining three elementary schools and regional day school with interior and exterior surveillance cameras. So, if this product is approved and we are able to move forward, all the schools in the district will now have interior and exterior security surveillance. The next thing, there's a grant where I'm asking the board to approve grant funds that we've received from the New Jersey Schools Insurance Group. Again, this is another safety-related grant. Typically, what we've been doing with this funding is, we've been putting it towards the surveillance cameras that we've already installed at the high school and the middle school. If the Securing the School of Children's Future Bond Act grant is approved under Lissa's Law, then we'll be able to utilize these funds for other things. What we will do is, we will, you know, ask the principals to kind of do an assessment in their buildings and see what the next thing is that we should be looking at for the purposes of security. I know one of the things that we have discussed is doing some more of the ballistic film in some of the high-contact areas of the buildings, so that could be something, it could be something as easy as putting stair treads on, you know, in the hallways and things like that, putting mirrors up and or putting signage up, so we will start looking at those things and seeing how we want to utilize those grant funds. And then lastly, myself, Dave, Chris Rousher and Chris Brown met with Wallace Brothers, who is the contractor that we, that will be working on the middle school workshop and converting that to our tech lab. We met with them yesterday. Preliminary work, prep work will start Monday already with demolition starting the following Monday. Essentially, what we did at this meeting was, we went over a tentative schedule, terms and conditions, work hours, you know, when we want them to do certain things, if there are students and staff in the building and those types of things. So, that was, you know, that's kind of what we discussed yesterday was just an initial kickoff meeting, get started. We will probably meet every two to three weeks, depending on how fast the project moves forward. As we get, you know, additional updates, I will update the board, whether it's in our week in review or at a board meeting as the project moves forward.
And what's anticipated, like the time it takes to renovate that?
The tentative completion date will be sometime in May, it could be sooner, but that's based on lead times for some of the equipment that we have to order and things like that. Tentatively, we're looking at.
In the event that we should have to shut down and go all remote for two weeks, will they still be able to work on this project?
Yes. Yeah, because they will actually have their own access in and out of the room, they don't actually have to come through the school at all. There are exterior doors that they can access, so they will not have to be in the building. They will have their own bathroom facilities and things like that, so even if we do wind up going full remote, they will still have access to that room and they'll be able to.
I guess a concern would be traffic patterns there, because if they're moving equipment in and out without a parking and a bus, is that going to be an issue?
Yeah, that's something, you know, that's something we discussed yesterday, we will have to coordinate that. I mean, essentially, what I think we're going to have them do is, there is a loading dock on the side of that building, so if they have to put dumpsters and things, those dumpsters will be put there, so they will not be in the way of the traffic pattern. They won't need a ton of parking, so we may have to give them a couple of spots in the back or find another place where they can park. I mean, they can also park at Ridgeway if they need to and walk over, but those are all things that we'll coordinate as we get further along in the project.
And one of the areas that we're looking at, because of the additional students coming in, is possibly bringing the buses and moving them back to the front of the building, right? So, that's a special possibility.
We also have to find work hours for them as to when they'll be able to access the buses.
Yes. Okay. All right, that's my opinion.
Okay, I'll open up the board member reports, I'd ask you please keep it brief, based upon the latest of the hours, it must have been your four hours.
I'll go first and I'll keep it brief. I want to first start off with congratulating the Teachers of the Year that were recognized tonight and the ESPs. Thank you for your hard work and dedication. I'd like to express my sympathies to the Curtis family, whose daughter Kelly passed, she was a member of the class of 2020. My sympathies go out to you. I attended a football game, Manchester versus Barnegat, it was nice to see the senior members of the marching band being recognized and I'd like to congratulate my niece Rihanna, who graduates this year. Mrs. Tefo, I see you back there and several people have said such awesome things and they were happy to have you at the elementary school. You did a really outstanding job, so, thank you for that. The Zoom extra help, I talked about this in the conferences with the middle school. I think it's great having Zoom as an extra help platform, it allows the students to bop in and out and after they receive the help, they don't have to stay there, they don't have to wait for a late bus, they can get their help and then you can go. So, hopefully, we can encourage some of this after the whole pandemic clears up. I had a great experience with the middle school conferences, all the teachers were organized, everybody clicked in and, you know, said what they had to say and it went very well, in my opinion. Today, I had the elementary school and it was nice because Mrs. May, my daughter's teacher, has two student teachers in her room, so it's nice to see young faces still interested in becoming educators in this crazy world that we're living in, so I thought that was a nice blessing to see. I'd like to welcome Maria Sarice, a math teacher, and Kelly Shurik, a special ed teacher at the Manchester Middle School. I hope you are enjoying yourself as you start on your teaching adventures. Halloween at the middle school was exciting for the middle schoolers, so I'd like to thank the staff there for like changing things up. I know the kids were excited to be able to have the opportunity to dress up this year and I also liked that they had that mask contest, that was a really cute idea. And I like the way Manchester Elementary School made Halloween so special, we got to design bags and then send goodies that the kids opened up when they were there and I know that it meant a lot to the kids, so even though it was different, it was still extra special. Congratulations to the girls' cross-country team and I wish the boys the best of luck as you move forward to the semifinals this Thursday and I wish everybody a happy, healthy Thanksgiving.
I just have a couple quick little things. First of all, I want to congratulate Mr. Payton, who's starting, being re-elected to the Board of Education. Look forward to welcoming our two new members who will be joining us in January and give them best wishes to Mrs. Hudak for her years of service to the board. In case you didn't notice, I happened to notice driving in tonight that we have new banners that hang from the light poles around the high school that were given from the class of 2020, welcoming everybody to the Home of the Hawks. So, I want to thank the class of 2020 for giving forth and putting a new fresh look here at Manchester Castle High School, so thank you for that. And again, my best wishes to everybody for a good Thanksgiving.
I have a few things to share with everybody. I wanted to first congratulate Mr. Payton, Ms. Winkler and Mr. Shadnack for winning the Board of Ed election. I look forward to working with you again, Mr. Payton, going to graduate school together, can't wait.
John was there too, so.
Oh, yes, and to the two new members that will be joining us, we know that there's no I in team and we're committed to this community together, so that's something important to say. Martin Luther King Jr. once said, "Life's most urgent question is, what are you doing for others?" If you know me, my life's truly about that, doing for others as a wife, mom, daughter, parent, teacher, support bad member. With that being said, I just wanted to thank everybody, humbly thank everyone for voting for me, putting your confidence and support into me in this voluntary position that I give people a lot of money for. I so truly love being involved and this is just something that I really do, so I want to thank you all from the bottom of my heart and I know that I won't let you down, I think everybody seems to know that about me, I put 110% into everything. I think I should put this on, will you put this on? Is that it? I didn't put it on before, I'm sorry.
Is it on? Oh, there it is. October 19th through the 22nd was NJSBA School Board Convention. I'm hoping you all had the opportunity to view the convention virtually. If you did not, you can visit the NJSBA for the next year to earn professional development credits and learn about educational topics that can benefit all of us as a board and I even knew as an individual as well. Over 6,000 people virtually attended the workshop. I got to watch a lot of the workshops later on after work and the past few weeks, I've been trying to catch up on some of them as well, but the good thing is it'll be on for about a year and you can download a lot of things, they have like a virtual briefcase, so you can download a lot of information and put it in there, their virtual handouts. The 27th, I attended a high school boys and girls cross-country home race against Jackson Memorial. I attended a lot of county meetings and I'm just going to mention them and then, most of them talked about the reopenings. There was a lot about legal implications of board operations, but I attended Sussex County, Union County, Millsix County, Morris Mercer. My husband said if I go to another county meeting on Thursday night, I might be in trouble, so I'm not going to go, but there was such good information that was given at all of these meetings, a lot about how your district is tracking and assessing student learning, what are the biggest issues that your district is facing as you move forward, how is your district planning for the coming year. So, there was a lot of really good information that was given. We had two CAL meetings, which is County Association of Leaders meetings, where all the county leaders come together and we talk about things that we're facing and a lot of that was all about the challenges, you know, we talked a lot about that. So, those meetings were November 2nd and I just had one this PS Monday as well. Let's see, what else, real quick? The Board Directors Meeting was last Friday night, we got the audit report, was presented and accepted. We just had the approval of NJSBA Legislative Committee appointments and the at-large appointments to nominate the three vice presidents and the president of New Jersey School Boards Association. We also talked about the upcoming delegate assembly that's scheduled for Saturday, this coming Saturday, the 21st at 9:00 AM virtually, so that's coming up. I'll be there representing Manchester and Ocean County. Last night, we had our Ocean County Mom and County School Board meeting and Mr. Payton and I had our governance training. So, I think I made it quick, I hope that was quick. Just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and be well.
Anyone else? All right, Public Disagreement Agenda items on, do you have any questions come in?
I have no questions here.
Nothing here?
Nope.
Okay. Any old business, Mr. Lorenz?
No old business.
Any correspondence?
No correspondence.
All right, let's move on to the agenda items, please. Section 1, eight minutes, need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Jenner?
Yes.
Ms. Biscardi?
Yes.
Ms. Mount?
Yes.
Ms. Pease?
Abstain.
Ms. Suedak?
Yes.
Mr. P?
Yes. D, travel number one, need a roll call? I mean, need a motion? I mean, I'm in a hurry. I'm not very good that weekend.
Motion.
Mr. You discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Jenner?
Yes.
Ms. Biscardi?
Yes.
Ms. Mount?
Yes.
Ms. Pease?
Yes.
Ms. Suedak?
Yes.
Mr. P?
Yes. C, Bus Evacuation Drills, number one, need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Jenner?
Yes.
Ms. Biscardi?
Yes.
Ms. Mount?
Yes.
Ms. Pease?
Yes.
Ms. Suedak?
Yes.
Mr. P?
Yes. D, NJSIG Safety Grant, an amount of $27,554.08, need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Jenner?
Yes.
Ms. Biscardi?
Yes.
Mr. Staples? Oh, sorry, Ms. Mount?
Yes.
Ms. Pease?
Yes.
Ms. Suedak?
Yes.
Mr. P?
Yes. E, Lissa's Law Security Grant, which Mr. Lorenz has posted in the total of $163,000. Need a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Jenner?
Yes.
Ms. Biscardi?
Yes.
Ms. Mount?
Yes.
Ms. Pease?
Yes.
Ms. Suedak?
Yes.
Mr. P?
Yes. F, Superintendent Goals and Objectives 2020-2021, need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Jenner?
Yes.
Ms. Biscardi?
Yes.
Ms. Mount?
Yes.
Ms. Pease?
Yes.
Ms. Suedak?
Yes.
Mr. P?
Yes. G, Operations, number one and two, need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jenner?
Yes.
Ms. Biscardi?
Yes.
Ms. Mount?
Yes.
Ms. Pease?
Yes.
Ms. Suedak?
Yes.
Mr. P?
Yes. H, New Jersey CUSAC and DPR, number one, need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Jenner?
Yes.
Ms. Biscardi?
Yes.
Ms. Mount?
Yes.
Ms. Pease?
Yes.
Ms. Suedak?
Yes.
Mr. P?
Yes. I, E, DPM Cooperative Purchase Program, I need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Lorenz, what's this for? What are we going to be purchasing under this program?
Yeah, the PP, well, it's PEP, I don't, it doesn't stand for anything, it's just called PEP, but PEP Cooper Purchasing works with Amazon Business. We use, the district uses Amazon Business for purchases. This is a cooperative purchasing program that now has joined with Amazon Business, so in order to participate with this program and get their pricing, we need the board to approve it.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions? All right, roll call.
Mr. Jenner?
Yes.
Ms. Biscardi?
Yes.
Ms. Mount?
Yes.
Ms. Pease?
Yes.
Ms. Suedak?
Yes.
Mr. P?
Yes. Section 2, A Administrative, numbers one through seven, need a motion?
Make a motion. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jenner?
Yes.
Ms. Biscardi?
Yes.
Ms. Mount?
Yes.
Ms. Pease?
Yes.
Ms. Suedak?
Yes.
Mr. P?
Yes. B, Personnel, number one through 29, need a motion? Yes. B, Personnel, number one through twenty-nine, need a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion?
I would just like to say congratulations to Mrs. Savona, um, protagonist of Regional Day School. Um, based on all the amazing things that were said during the presentations, I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of people that would love to build her shoes. Congratulations.
All right, anyone else? Parker, Roll Call, Mr. Laurentson?
Mr. Jenner?
Yes.
Ms. Scardy?
Yes.
Ms. Mount?
Yes.
Ms. Pease?
Yes.
Ms. Hudak?
Yes.
Mr. P?
Yes. Uh, C, Student Personals, number one, I need a motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Jenner?